All right, I'd like to call our regular village board meeting for order. If you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, please call a roll.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Moravka?
Here.
Trustee Richards?
Here.
Trustee Sandberg?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Sterba?
Here.
All right, so item two, we are going to table to our next meeting. They were going to be here, but the girls' basketball team is playing, I believe, in the super sectionals tonight, and they wanted to attend that, so we'll make that presentation next meeting. Next time, public comments. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the February 12th regular village board meeting. We've got the payroll and accounts payable, and those amounts, the payroll period ending February 17th, total of $63,001.1613. Accounts payable for the period ending February 23rd, out of the general fund, $47,036.64. Out of the capital improvement fund, $17,355.75. Out of the business development district fund, $15,183.25. And out of the TIP-2 fund, $3,250.50, for a total of $82,826.14. We also have, on the consent agenda, a raffle license for project headspace and timing during, at the Will County Fairgrounds. Are there any items in the consent agenda that trustees would like to remove? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion? Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Sandberg?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Moving on to staff and committee reports. Troy was not able to make it here tonight. Was there anything in his report? I don't think he had anything really to report. Bob, you want to give your report?
Yes, your brief, I guess. There's no snow, so the staff is staying busy in the shop doing a lot of maintenance, so, equipment maintenance. I know there's been a few questions about the gas downtown. The relocation is done. They've moved on to service portion of that project now. So, maybe a week and a half tops, and they'll be done with that. You'll notice downtown, the streetlights, the poles have been stripped for the streetscape There is no hometown hero banners can be placed this year on the poles, obviously. Public Works, we got a new John Deere mower. I know some trustees, I believe the mayor's come out and seen it. If you ever have a chance, come out and take a look. I'll take a look. And, in your packet, the pre-con meeting that I put in my report is not to date for the pre-con meeting for the streetscape, so we'll share that soon with all of you. That's all really I have.
So the other, with the gas relocation project, some of those holes that they dug are on places that we weren't planning on doing anything with the streetscape, so those are going to be restored by the county?
Restored or paved and, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Chief, you had a nice report, anything else?
Yeah, I'm just going to hit a couple of things, a couple of highlights on it. Daniel Napoli, the candidate from town, he's passed everything that we've sent him to. He's got one last phase, and that'll probably come before the board in April for appointment once he passes everything. I don't know if you guys noticed, and I got Dreamo, maybe I'll put it on there tomorrow morning. The speed limit on Wilmington-Pietton Road has been lowered from 45 to 40. So, Bob's going to move our speed sign out there, just to help people be aware that the speed sign has been reduced. And, I'm looking at probably an April 1st deployment for our body cameras. We have them in, but it takes a while. We have to do a lot of backlight work on it, but we should by April 1st, they should be out, because I want, January 1st, we're required by law to have them, but I want officers to get used to them way before the date we're actually required to have them by law. So, that's about all I have, unless there's some other questions.
So the speed limit lowering, that was a county decision, correct?
Yes, yeah. We didn't lower the speed, but the county came out, and they didn't even tell us that they were doing it. We just saw them putting signs up one day, so.
Oh, no, okay.
So, and then they sent you the email today, and they did it on Thursday or Friday of last week.
Yeah. I'm still used to going 45 on it, and I'm like, oh, thanks, thanks for this in the report, just cut it down, thanks.
It's a good idea. Forty-five, I still would rate your ticket, but it's close.
Forty-seven, you would.
Yes.
We've asked them in the past to lower it.
The Tucker portion is still 45, though.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, they did 50, just outside of town, they lowered it, around 50.
So how, when does it go down, like, on the west side of I-57?
Yes. Yeah, right before you get, right before you get to H-8.
And so your speed sign, you can change it so it's not 25 miles an hour?
Yeah, we'll change it, yeah, we'll change it. We'll change it to 40.
Yeah, okay. All right. So there's a report from Amy in there, do you have anything to add?
I was just going to add that we had three new business registrations, and like we talked about last time, we're not going to bring every single business registration to you, we'll do those administratively. The code does not require that they come here, and sometimes it helps timing-wise, so that businesses, you know, if they want to move quicker, they can. So, but I'm going to report out to you everyone I get. So we got one today called Slim Fitness, they have a Frankfurt location, and then they're going to move into where the River Valley Therapy was in Sunset Plaza.
Okay.
And they want to open here, like, in the next few days. And then we have, I'm going to kill this pronunciation, Dol, what do you think, Stacy?
Dolomitas?
Dolomitas.
Dolomitas?
They're a cheese manufacturing place, and they make this fancy cheese, and they deliver it to restaurants, some in Chicago. So they're going into where Sherry had her hair place, and they're, right now, have a permit, and they're doing renovations in there. And then they had talked about maybe a deli, a pickup, takeout, deli sandwiches only, and maybe some outdoor seating, like in the little grassy area in front of Blue Lotus, because they own both of those. And then Charlie's at the travel center.
What's that up to, you know?
No, no, I, soon.
March eighth?
March eighth. I'll be there.
There was the treasures report in there. Our treasures here, if you have any questions. Building department report was in there. One thing I wanted to point out to everybody is, obviously, there's been a lot of demolition going on at the old meat market. We gave them permission to put the dumpster and that truck, you know, on the street, just temporarily. We were hoping that was going to be gone by the, you know, last week, but it's been a lot bigger job than they originally thought, so I think they're shooting for the end of this week that it'll be gone in the front, at least. And it's just, I mean, it's good for the downtown to get that building cleaned out, there's just a lot of junk that came out of there, so it's a good thing. Did I miss anybody? Let's see, Angie's not here. Moving on to my comments, I really only have one thing. Amy would like to submit a grant to the USDA. It's a rural business development grant, and this would be for retail market study in the area. So I just need kind of a consensus from the board, that you guys think that that would be a good idea, so we can kind of include that in her application, that the board agrees with trying to get a grant for that?
I think it's a great idea.
Yes. Great idea. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, moving on, we don't have any old business. New business, approved video gaming license for Hanson's dugout, 209 North Second Street. That application is in your packet, and it appears that nothing was in order. So let's see, Mr. Hanson is here. If anybody has any questions, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sterba.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Sandberg?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item E is presentation of the proposed fiscal year '25 budget. So just to kind of update everybody on the budget process, so we started off with the staff putting together all their budget numbers. We had an administrative oversight committee meeting a couple of weeks ago that went over those, and, you know, made some changes and cuts, and now we have the presentation of the, this is still a draft, and if you have any questions or changes from tonight will be made, and then the next meeting, we will have a public hearing, and then hopefully approval of the budget. So that's kind of where we're at. Well, that, I'll turn it over to Ann Marie to give us a little presentation.
Hello. So, same time of the year again, 2025 budget covers the period of April 1st, 2024 through March 41st of 2025. I think you got, everybody has the packet that we handed out as a presentation, and then there's the packet that contains all the detail, it kind of starts at the front as a summary, and then as you go back into the document, you get to all the light item detail of the different departments. So just to kind of talk about some highlights and some guidelines that we used when we formulated the budget, the board does have a formal fund balance policy in its general fund, which is its main operating fund. So when we put the budget together, we have to make sure that we stay within those policy levels. That policy says that you'll maintain a 30% fund balance at all times. The village is way over that amount, but as a smaller village with limited funding sources, your fund balance really should be as high as you can possibly keep it. So we're way above that 30% as we speak, and even after budgeting in 2025, we're going to be over that level. The 2025 budget does reflect a fund balance drop of approximately $501,000, and that's after a one-time transfer to the VDD fund, as well as a transfer to TIP-2 fund to pay interest on the outstanding bonds. Both of those transfers are, you're able to recoup those, so as increment is generated by the TIP funds, you'll be able to pull that money back into the general fund, and then as VDD revenues come in, you'll be able to pull that money back into the general fund also. So that's something that hopefully in the future will help the village boost its general fund fund balance. We didn't really budget any significant new revenues, but the 2025 budget does include some travel center revenues. We were really conservative on the amount that we included. We've got a few payments from them, they are lower than anticipated, but we do anticipate they're going to continue, to continue to go up. But we were pretty conservative on including that in the budget. We've also seen the incremental tax revenue from the TIP-2 funds start to go up. It seems like the county did a partial assessment of the travel center, and we did, I think, double the increment that came in as compared to the prior year. So next year should be a full assessment, and we should receive a significant amount of TIP revenues. That revenue is dedicated to bonds, to pay off the bonds, but hopefully we'll have a little bit extra and be able to bring some of that money back into the general fund. Capital spending is, there's some capital projects within the depart, within the budget this year for 2025 of approximately 5.1 million. Some of that is reflected in the general fund in the operating departments, because it strictly kind of belongs to the function of that department, but the majority that's in your capital projects fund, like road projects, storm sore projects, things like that, that aren't actually related to operations, they're things that we do for the public. The 5.1 million is partially funded by the DCEO grant for the downtown project. We've already received a few reimbursements on that, so we'll continue to submit those as we incur the expenses. And then, the Conrad Street Storm Sore Project is funded by ARPA grant proceeds that the village is going to receive from Will County, and we've already started receiving those funds also. They're both reimbursement basis, so we have to spend the money first, and then we get the money back. I'm finding my little typos in my presentation. The 2025 budget includes a recommended contribution to the police pension fund of $372,000. That is about $100,000 less than last year, but that doesn't mean that it's going to continuously go down, because most of the effect on the police pension funding is market conditions, so it just kind of depends on the market. But the village does contribute 100% of the recommended contribution every year, so we should be able to maintain a pretty healthy fund balance in that pension fund. Any questions? I tend to talk fast. General fund revenues, since that's the biggest fund that the village has, I kind of outlined where they come from. Internal governmental is obviously the largest component of that. That includes sales tax, use tax, cannabis, income tax, and video gaming. Sales and income tax are obviously the largest components of that revenue source, of that internal governmental source. We've got fines and forfeitures, we've got some other taxes, which includes property taxes, road and bridge, as well as electric, gas, water, and telecom utility taxes. License and purpose is a small amount, and then we've got some miscellaneous revenues that includes interest income, franchise fees, and some other miscellaneous revenues. I will say that the village's interest income has drastically improved over the last few years. I mean, obviously, rates have gone up, so that has helped, but I think just the redesign of the portfolio that was done, we've really generated a lot more interest income, which is awesome. Any questions? General fund expenditures, they're just kind of divided into the category. Obviously, personal services is the largest component of general fund expenditures, that's normal for any municipality. That's mostly what our spending is on, is personnel that provides services to the community. The 2025 salary adjustment for non-union is, or for union is per contracts, and the non-union is 3%. The village's IMRF rate actually went down a little bit as compared to last year. I think your rate is probably one of the lowest that I've seen for IMRF purposes, which is awesome. So you're very well-funded on the IMRF side. Capital in the general fund includes a police vehicle, a snow pusher, piece of equipment for public works, some village hall improvements, and security cameras, I believe, for village hall.
For the whole complex.
For the whole complex, okay. That's the general fund capital expenditures that you see in that piece of the pie. So the other funds in the village, obviously, the general fund is the village's biggest fund, is where all the operations are charged to, all employees are charged to the general fund. You don't have any funds where employee, other funds where employees are charged, but you do have some other funds that you do maintain. Capital improvement fund, obviously, is where the capital projects are. Those are, once again, being funded by the grant this year, as well as the ARPA funds that we're receiving from the county. You can see the items that are listed there, the Conrad Street being the biggest one, and that is, like I said, ARPA-funded. Business Development has the largest capital budget this year, with the streetscape project that is ongoing, and that, once again, is being funded by DCO, DCOE, EO grant proceeds of, I think it was like $2.7 million total, is that grant. We've got some property acquisition in there, facade improvement, and then the market study, which I believe is that the grant that we're submitting for.
Yeah, just a little, a little complimentary.
Yep, and we don't have that revenue budgeted, so that'll be extra revenue. So those are really the other funds of the village. We don't really have that many funds. Some municipalities have 30 or 40. We don't, we only have six that we budget for, which makes for an easy budget to put So that's really the gist of the presentation. Like I said, the document that was handed out contains all the detail of the budget. You know, if you look at that first page, that's just the balance, that's kind of the savings that you have in each of your funds. Obviously, that general fund is the one that we want to keep as high as we can, given that that's where your major revenue sources are, and your revenue sources are somewhat limited as a non-home rule community. And then as you go back in the document, it just gets into more detail. I don't know if there's any questions or comments, or if we want to go through any of that detail.
Questions?
I do have one question. Just going back, I had to laugh, because it was like a time twist for the DEO, EEO thingy.
DCEO.
You said $7 million, would we be getting that bad?
2.7 million.
Oh, 2.7 million.
Yeah, I believe that's, that's what it was, right? The 2.7.
2.5.
So we have, yeah.
2.5.
2.5, okay. We have to incur the expenses, and then we submit a report to the state, and then we get reimbursed for those expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Just kind of a side note, the governor's office, the governor, in his budget, proposed budget, he proposed eliminating the grocery tax, which is 1%, and the tax that we pay on, like, regular groceries, like real groceries, like, you know, meat, produce, stuff like that, that all goes to the state, the village doesn't get any of that. But there's a tax on, like, junk food, like pop and chips and stuff like that, that we do participate, we do get some of that sales tax. So, as it's proposed in the governor's budget, he wants to eliminate that completely, and so a lot of municipalities would be taking a pretty big hit on that. Our portion, we annually collect about $160,000, so it's not a small amount. So, we'll be, you know, working with our groups and legislature to, you know, kind of make sure that doesn't impact the municipalities. So, if the state wants to get rid of that tax, that's great, but let them, you know, it's their money, not ours. So, anyway, just, if you hear something like that, that's kind of what we're working on, so. Any other questions for Ann Marie? Great.
So we'll prepare the ordinance and bring it back on March 11th for formal approval. I'll be sending that to you to review again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item F, approved resolution authorizing execution of agreements for services between the village of Pietton and Vicarious, multi-media, the amount of $10,000 for public relations campaign in relation to the downtown streetscape. So, we talked a little bit about this last couple of meetings. This is another group that we had contacted. We have trustee Richards, and I both saw Melody at the IML conference, and I contacted her, and she gave us a proposal, and so she is on Zoom call tonight. Can you hear me, Melody?
Yeah, I can hear you well.
Perfect.
Hello.
Okay, so their proposal was in the packet. I think it was a little more extensive than the previous proposal that we got. She's willing to work with the businesses and meet with them individually to promote them during the project, and also have a couple of open houses if needed. I mean, the first thing that we would do is develop a little flyer to send to every resident, inviting them to an open house, and also inviting them to sign up for an And then, at the open house, we have, you know, people from the village there, possibly the engineer, so people come and ask questions about timing and all that, so we hope to have that following our pre-con meeting, so that we kind of know what the contractor's thinking. And then from there, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, we'd send something out via email, and also social media pages informing residents of progress and access issues and all that, and also, if there's any questions, you know, we'd be able to answer those quickly through this e-newsletter, so. Questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. So with people who don't have emails, like, I kind of said something before about my husband doesn't do anything with computers. For older people who don't have emails, or don't, aren't really articulate with computers or websites or anything, is there going to be something other than the original postcard? Is, can they sign up for maybe mailings, or maybe if the Pietton Commerce can post something, like, at the post office, or downtown in the storefront, just something where people who don't use the computer a whole lot will have access to the information as well?
Did you get any questions?
I can answer them.
Got it.
Yeah, sure. Hello, I'm just seeing the mayor, so I'm sorry, I can't, let me ask you directly.
It's okay, it's Shelley Moravka.
Nice to meet you all, thanks for having me. Yeah, we are, one of, part of our services are to create updates that would be posted on the website. I don't see any reason why we can't get some printed copies and put a little cover sheet on it, and have it fit in places such as libraries, places where senior citizens live, assistants of living, you know, township, wherever they need to be, or they are, rather, park districts and such, any place that they frequent, if they aren't, you know, digitally savvy, technology savvy, we can certainly do that. We're doing that for the website updates anyway, and social media and such, and the e-newsletter that we would create, so not a problem.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
And you also mentioned that you'd be working with the local newspapers as well to try to get out information, correct?
Yes, yes. Part of the goal is under the statement of work, and the proposal is to contact directly the reporters that cover your village, making sure, any of the little wider area, we want to make sure that everyone knows what's happening with this, that we end up working with you. Definitely, media relations, we take part of it, they like feeling like they're on the inside, and they're getting information from the, you know, government organization, so we definitely want to maintain good contact with our media as well, help get our word
Have you ever done texts instead of email? Like through phone numbers?
I couldn't hear that question.
She asked if you sign out texts, can that be part of the campaign?
Well, actually, I was speaking with manager Ingles, and she had said that you guys are looking into Everbridge, or you do have it. We don't normally send texts through our communications, but there are normally text opportunities within municipalities that we work with, so to just direct them, she's saying there's an update about the downtown streetscape construction project available app, potentially that could be done through your system. Normally, that's not something we do. It's not normally something that most groups like mine are doing.
Okay.
But I think it's a great idea. I will put that on record, just to make sure that people are getting it. I will say, and I understand what you're getting at, with making sure that people can access the information, whatever capability. Part of what we do, we are going to establish, which we would, rather establish an e-newsletter and Instagram and another social page, and we would want to send out a physical mailer, like a postcard, enlarged postcard, very bright, noticeable, with the information about the first open house, all the new communication channels we would establish for you, if we were to work with you, and make sure that people have something physical and handily reach everybody. That is, that is the one surefire way, an EBBM, everyday delivery, direct mail, where the carrier will actually bring the piece to every single resident and business. So in that way, you literally reach everybody, and in that communication will be how they access the new e-newsletter, if they haven't heard about it yet, and they can sign up, directing them to the web pages, and directing them to the new social media channels. So we really do try to create a nice circle, so we reach every single person, and once we get people to that open house, we can further engage with them, and if they have additional needs, we're going to be there to listen to those, and to help make sure everybody is as informed as they would like to be.
So in Everbridge, it's through the EMA, the Emergency Management Agency for Will County, and it's usually for emergency messaging, but there's a non-emergency option, and they have a text platform. So how we're going to leverage through this is, you have to sign up for that. So while we're asking people to sign up for the e-newsletter and other things, we're going to, we're going to have that as an option, so people can, you know, we don't have to go out collecting information twice, they can, they can sign up for it, and they can get emails, and they can get text messages, too.
So I think one of the nice things about this is this is, this is creating a framework for us to communicate. for us to communicate, you know, beyond this project that, you know, we can use this to let people know about, you know, branch pickup or leaf pickup or, you know, all that kind of thing. We'll have a way to communicate with them other than just our website and Facebook.
Now, how long is she in our employ, like how long does this last?
So that, her, in her contract, it's, you know, it starts now and it goes until the end of November, till the project is done.
Okay. Now this is what the residents?
Yeah, we're gonna see the project through and that is the estimated end of the project, so at this point, hopefully we don't have an early end of construction season between the weather that comes through and then we would like. But yeah, I'm seeing the project through for sure.
Oh, okay, thank you. This is Jackie Richards, I just wanted to say this is what our, this is what our business owners are asking for, communication, um, getting in front of them before things become a problem is ideal, so I support this. And I did not think about the post office, I didn't think about text messages, so good job.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay.
If not, uh, this, first of all, trustee Hudson has to recuse himself for this as he owns property in downtown. This would be resolution twenty-four dash R dash oh-three. Need a motion to approve?
Motion. Second?
Moved by trustee Slus, second by trustee Richards.
Trustee Marevka?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Sandberg?
No.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
No.
Yes. All right, thanks Melanie. Okay.
Thank you so much. Happy to be with you today.
Thanks.
Moving on, uh, questions of the press?
None at this time.
Any other correspondence, communications, petitions? Not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you know what, I do have one question. Um, have we talked, um, to the gentleman who owns the old Napa building? Have we talked to him again about what's going on with, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of an ongoing thing, Henry's been after him and there hasn't been a lot of response, but, uh.
He seemed really gung ho when he first was in here.
Yeah.
Like what, four years ago?
He had pulled a demo permit and it expired.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying to see communication with them and, you know, we probably will have to escalate it.
Okay, there's just one, thank you.
Nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Right, trustee, second, right, trustee Marevka, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.